Okay, we're gonna call the meeting orders. It's 1:32. And we've got a call on here to acknowledge any guesses here today. And we're gonna deliberate and consider action on the following items. Number one is Mutian Sheriff, Mutian County Sheriff's Office profile, racial profile in any of the reports. Let's make this vivid. Gentlemen, the state legislature passed a law every year ago that we have to present our racial profile report to the commissioner every year. Basically, the numbers are real close to the same. We made a few more traffic stops than we did last year, but the percentages of the genders and the races is all pretty close to the same. If you'll go to the side of six pages right, it's gonna have the gender, says gender, race, ethnicity, and all those are pretty much in line with the last two or three years. Sixty-three recorded traffic stops, thirteen blacks, forty-seven whites and Latinos. In one stop, it was known what the race was, the ethnicity was. Nine were violations of law, seven were pre-existing knowledge, where we had knowledge of the driver, what we were stopping for, eleven moving violations and other traffic violations of thirty-six, which was stickers and registration and lights and that type of stuff. But anyway, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have about this thing. Lots of lots of work goes in since it does a lot of work to... You have to have kind of a collination to fill all this stuff out and she handles that every year, so.
On the vehicle, traffic violations, such as stickers and whatever, do you always use a citation?
No.
Okay.
Every now and then we will, but generally speaking, we don't write tickets. Sometimes the violations by school buses, I know we get kind of doing this, I wrote one the other day, something about disruption. Unless it's really a hazard violation, we just... So I'm glad to answer any questions that you can have.
I was a little surprised, didn't say he was a racist, ethnicity, and long bar at the stop. I guess you don't know until you actually...
Yeah, that one particular time there, I don't know for sure, but I must say that we got a call that it was a white male driving a seventy-five Ford that was, might have some dope or something in the car, or whatever it was given, and that the ethnicity was transmitted to the officer that was stopping him.
So you don't know what you're stopping until you walk up to the car?
Don't have a clue. Most of our traffic stops are at night. These four guys during the day shift are running from one to the other, so they don't have a lot of time to work. But most of these traffic stops are at night, suspicious situations.
Nearly half of them, drugs is involved.
Sir?
Nearly half of them, drugs are involved.
Yeah. You stop probably twenty cars at night, and probably ten of them, something in there, paraphernalia or something, you know. And marijuana laws have dropped so loose in our, in the state of Texas now, if they've just got a little weed in there, that's just kind of, they're gonna duck it out and go from there. It's just like the laws are so loose.
MacDillers may be forming any six-pack gas truck.
Well, that's different, too, because when I was on Howard Street, we would take it and save it for...
Or save it for your party, not for the lady.
Two years for five days, so we'd keep it a level of for two years. And after two years, probably after two or three weeks, it would all of a sudden be a...
Just wanted to make sure.
Maybe you ever don't get over that?
No.
I'd like to know if we accept the racial profile call.
Well, for the matter of fact, we accept the sheriff's officer's profile, racial profile in any of the report. Any discussion? All in both. Five votes. Number two, discuss if appropriate, approve the county treasurer as investment officer.
We have our resolution here to approve Ginger Samson's, our county treasurer, as an investment officer.
Yeah, I'd like that motion.
Once we've made the second, we approve the county treasurer as an investment officer in Mutian County. Any discussion? Not all in both. Number three, discuss if appropriate, approve the order about the investment policy.
Is there any difference in this policy and the rest of the whole policy? Please.
I think she needs a coffee stand, and I need my coffee stand from what I understand.
This one, I approve the doctor, Mira, on Christie's. Do you mind the motion?
I don't mind the motion.
That's me.
No, I don't want to apologize.
This is, this is actually the organization approving our investment policy.
Make the motion. to assist us in making the right choices or us...
We have banking officers that Ginger notifies to come and talk to us about what they offer. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. We're not standalone, doing this on our own. We have professionals in.
Yeah, Ginger chooses to have a committee to, for everybody to get together and call in. We only have a couple of banks that are even eligible to use, and so we have somebody that comes in and talks to everybody about it, and then she gets everybody's thoughts on it and...
Okay. Won't there be something about First Financial we have proven into?
We haven't got that part.
They got that, oh, okay.
We gotta get this under our bill for improvement, under investment policy, because we're gonna have permission to be able to move in there, because our money's at jeopardy right now, since I don't have that whole policy in place.
I'm making a motion, let me see.
We just need a vote, Ginger.
All in both. Okay, number four, discuss if appropriate, approve the investment policy. We're not adopting, we approved it.
I make that motion.
One second. For the matter of fact, we approve the investment policy. Any discussion? Not all in both. I'd like to deliberate, just a little bit on it, enlighten the court, that since we've made Ms. Ginger the investment officer, she will be in contact with the investment people that will be investing, and we don't invest in certain things, guidelines by the government, which demand that we make the county money, which may not be just a small amount, rather than take a gamble. We can participate with certain investments. And then also, along with that, she has to come back and report to the court once a quarter as the activity that goes on, and it's the investment. So I just enlighten all a little bit about that. We'll be looking forward to it after she does the recommitment of these investments. And I think we've been held accountable for that. All right, number five, discuss if appropriate, adopt the new roadway application procedure for precinct four, Mr. West, if possible.
We've got seventeen roads that are going out for bid, and I felt like we needed a little more instruction for the contractors to bid that way. And this is, this is a minimum. We got seventeen roads that were FEMA, part of the FEMA grant, and we had those on-site inspections with FEMA, and all of them failed out, pretty much the same application for all roads. So I got the gentleman master to draw up a little drawing, Pat Oakes, to help me with it, and to give to contractors what we expect whenever they do bid on it and get them produced.
Does that someone would have to come to the court? For the application procedure?
So it's not been an engineer specification?
Uh...
It's sort of been an engineer specification, I don't know if it has to come through court, but it doesn't need to be in his specification, like it was the last story that I had done.
No, it should be in the bid package.
Yeah, it will be in the bid package.
But we shouldn't have to approve it, should we, next quarter?
I don't know, Liz always just handles that, so I don't know.
I would think we need to do some type of, I mean, this is some type of policy that we can hold accountable. The county can hold it accountable instead of just a bid package, huh? If we set this as a minimum.
I'll agree, but when you said it for precinct four, that limited it to...
Well, I didn't want to put anything out there, and I didn't try to put y'all in a trap, you know. I wanted to do it for precinct four, because I got these roads coming up, and I think this is, it's what FEMA calls for on their site inspection report, pretty much exactly what we're doing here, is we gotta get the road out of the ditch and put a slope on it and put suitable materials in traffic with it.
Well, I agree with you, I think it's great, because I wasn't pleased with what I got out of my three roads, and all certainly better than what I had, but that's, and that's, I blame that on engineering.
That's exactly the reason I've done this, because I wasn't satisfied with what I got out of Shepherd's Road and what I was getting. You kind of, ladies talked to the contractor, well, their site inspection report is what you bid on. That's what I expected to see. Well, it just called for it for here and there and whatever, you know, it was a mess. So I wanted to know what you're bidding on, and what I expect whenever they get through.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I don't think that that necessarily needs to come through court, there just needs to be what's put on the, you know, what's sent out, the proposal.
Yeah, the bid package, it's what this is the requirements in, which is maybe just a typical drawing, but, say it's a typical drawing, that'd be what we're going for. What I'm saying is, for his precinct, the whole court wouldn't have to adopt that.
No. I mean, when a road is ready to be built and, you know, bid out, I guess, you just need to get, make sure it's in the bid package. I mean, do you not, do you not get to review it before it's sent out, the bid package?
Oh, yeah. Now, if all the precincts together want to go the same typical, then we could, we could make it in our policy, this is a procedure in which we want to follow.
I don't think you should make it typical for all four precincts, because we know that they're flat man down there, and I deal with mostly hills, and so my requirement might be a little different. Of course, I mean, that's good for a minimum, maybe.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what our road in here, it is a minimum.
You're saying for, you know, it's project specific, you need to make sure your bid package includes everything you want in it, just practically speaking.
But really, we shouldn't have to do that, that engineer should not.
Exactly, that's true.
Engineers should know, we shouldn't have to, I mean, we need to review it, which I didn't last time on mine, but, and I don't think anybody else did either. We just assumed, and we didn't get what we thought we was gonna get.
Well, these, particularly ones, the FEMA, this FEMA grant, we didn't, we didn't hire any engineers to do the drawings and all of that, part of that. We just taken, bid it out with the site inspection report from FEMA's site inspection.
You went by the scope of work, sir. You went by the scope of work.
We, we developed the scope of work out of those reports.
See, I did all mine myself, from FEMA part of it.
And I did too, and that's where, that's the reason that I put this together, because I wasn't satisfied with the job that I got out of. Just giving them the site inspection report and having them bid on that.
You did precinct four, right? Yeah, we did, we just precinct four, but it's only a bid.
Yeah, I just, I actually, if y'all had any input into it, any suggestions or anything, that was...
Second.
Mostly the matter of fact, we authorize a, to adopt the new roadway application for so you're precinct four, any discussion?
Is this, is this, do you want this just to, this is just for grants, or you want this to be on anything that's done in your...
Oh, whenever, is it total road rework? Yeah, I think that, I'd like to stick with it. Now, patch yards and, and I don't know, it doesn't apply. Are you gonna rework the road completely? Yeah.
I think what you're trying to do is you put this on the wall, and then by walking, and you say this is what my road looks, what all my roads look like. And if you want to bid on it, fine, if you don't, it's still fine. But we're just, we're just talking about his missing, not yours. Right? All in both. Okay, authorized that type of application of the district's bid for precinct four for projects four, three, seven, one, three.
Well, that's the seventeen roads that I was talking about that are going out for bid, and it's part of that FEMA grant, it's a ninety-ten grant, and that's the procedure we're gonna use to rework.
Make it right. Mostly the matter of fact, we authorize for that type of bid on precinct four, road repair for project four, three, seven, one, three. Any discussion? Not all in both. Likewise, on three, three, two, seven, six. Make the motion. Authorized that type of consultation to bid for precinct four, road repair project three, three, four, seven, six. Second. Mostly the matter of fact, we authorize a bid for precinct four, repair project three, three, four, seven, six. Any discussion? Not all in both. Okay, number eight, if it's not possible, take action to approve the sponsor, Arco Corporation, the Southeast Texas Flood Control District, LGC, and point director for the local government corporation. We've already done this one before, and a lot of it's that always involved, so if we're gonna redo it, so we're, if we're gonna appoint someone, they're gonna have to come back to the full, ever, question of court to get that approved, we can do it within our own resolution down there.
So just say it's a, you're twelve, right? Is it twelve or eight?
Eight. I make that one. Mostly the matter of fact, we approve the sponsor of Arco Corporation, the Southeast Texas Flood Control District, LGC, and point director for local government corporation. Any more discussion? Not all in both. Okay, number nine, discuss if appropriate, approve mileage request to the veteran's office, and he is asking for mileage, who are to do that, and I see no reason why he shouldn't, but he is, the minutes now work here in Mutian County.
Was that a motion? Did you make that a motion? I seconded that motion.
You made that motion?
I seconded, I thought you made it.
I'll make it.
All right, I seconded.
Mostly the matter of fact, we approve the mileage request to the veteran's office, and he is trying to do that. Any discussion? Not all in both. Then number ten, discuss if appropriate, approve annual tree maintenance for the courtyard from environmental free service, and that's in the packet if you look at it. There's been some discussion how we approach it, and I've got several people involved around Mutian, and we've got different opinions, so I got an alborist, and he come up here and evaluated the trees, and that's why he recommended removal of three trees, which is minus twenty-eight fifty, and trimmed the other twenty-two trees for eight, eight thousand seven hundred fifty. And I'm not sure what to speak for, but it all amounts up to thirteen thousand, a hundred dollars.
And that just wasn't real crazy about that, you know. We've got a dead limb, we need to trim it, we got a dead tree, we need to cut it. I'm not afraid to spend thirteen thousand dollars to get that done. Some of the labels down there don't like it, they just don't like it, I mean, it needs to be done, and it's good, and I'd like it to be done for less than thirteen thousand dollars.
It's too dirty, you don't figure about it.
Three trees or one over here, if it falls, it's gonna fall on our transformers, and the sheriff's gonna be out of power, and then the deal commission is gonna be on hand, where you're gonna put all the, pick a lot of time to get all this stuff.
Over there, we're out there.
Yeah.
Where you're part of, all of you.
And then Miss Fordy will take you home that evening.
Well, if it falls out that way, it won't hurt to generate, so we just be able to pick it up now.
I'm already out of pickup.
And the other ones over here, I think it's a con tree that's got a hole down in the middle, probably in a shell, it's gonna fall, it's gonna fall this way, out in the street, it's gonna fall that way. And then we got a real small con tree underneath, one green tree over there, and all that, you know, we're gonna never be anything, so that's the three trees you're talking about right now.
And that trimming of twenty-two trees, that's for one time deal, is that a...
That's for this year. Most, most courthouses, for long, has got a yearly contract for maintenance of the trees. We don't have it, never had it. And then when you go out there and fit it in, then you got somewhere coming into office cussing you out, wanting to throw you out of office.
That's when you get them big bucks, Judge. So I don't think that's happening.
That'd be hard.
You know, the only thing I think of was last year, whenever it was, that we got some work done here, and my Lord, there was fifty people in here, got their bread, their bread and flour done.
Well, if it falls out that way, it won't hurt the generator, so we should just be able to pick it up and stuff.
I'm already out of pickup. I'm already out of pickup.
And the other ones over here, uh, I think it's a con tree that's got a hole down in the middle. Probably in the shell, it's going to fall, slip over, it'll fall this way, out in the street, it'll fall the other way. And then we've got a real small con tree, uh, I think, uh, green tree over there, two and all that. You know, we can never beat anything, so that's a great tree you're talking about.
And that, that trimming of twenty-two trees, that's, uh, that's a one-time deal because that's for this year.
Yeah. Most, most courthouses for long has got a year's contract for maintenance of the trees. We don't have it, never had it. And then the time to go out there and fit it in them, then you got somewhere to come into office, cussing me out, wanting to throw you out of office.
That's when you get them big bucks, George. So I couldn't take that happen.
Let that be, all right.
You know, the only thing I think of was last year, whatever it was, that we got some work done here. And my Lord, there was fifty people in here, got their breath, their breath is slow, I hope it works up. I, I never heard so many people so mad over cutting limbs or whatever. I didn't know people got mad over something.
We didn't, possibly, we have that con tree right over there hanging up Christmas lights.
We got a building to fall out in the middle of the street, don't carve everything else. We worried about cutting the tree. Again, I, you know, six times we had plenty of money, but I, I just worry about the money. Uh, and that just seemed like a little too much. I, of course, I don't know what Teddy Berry charges or anybody else if that's paid. If we was going to cut it, I just didn't have somebody local to do it. And I, I don't think we had to have an arborist to tell us that a limb dead in that tree. That's just my opinion.
Somewhere make a motion, a three-year pace over the tree.
A motion, a motion.
They wouldn't want me to take it. We've got a, a dead limb, we're going to cut it. We've got a dead tree, we're going to cut the tree.
The men bill is stringing enough by trees over there.
Are you going to use some of that common sense, Jim?
Yeah. I think something needs to be done now. I think maybe water, see, come on with the tree trimming. If we fix a waterfall, we're going to have a tree trimming. Trees reading up all the water.
Hey, hey, no.
Did you keep sending them to the courthouse?
I'm sorry.
Can we do something with him, boy?
That's strange. He got that raised.
I mean, do the trees need to be, I mean, do they need to be cut? I mean, does this need to be done? Really, I mean, seriously, we've been talking about this now for, I've been here three years and we've been talking about it for now, it's going on four years. I'm just saying to be, get it done and be, get it over with and let's move on to chapter two.
Well, I'm, I feel like there's a greater chance of somebody stepping up at three-foot drop off on that sidewalk out there than it is that tree or a limb falling on somebody's head.
Well, it's just not there. I'd like the courthouse to look as good as we can make it look. Uh, I think we've come a long way in the courthouse. I think there's a long way still to be made yet in our courthouse. But, uh, I think the lawn sets the precedence of what goes on inside the courthouse along with a lot more things around here. So I'm going to say I vote for getting the yard cleaned up and.
Well, now, that don't have anything to do with cutting trees and law. No, that doesn't have nothing to do.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about we need to clean it up. My, my vote is to, to clean the yard up, be done with it one time. Apparently this guy is a licensed insured bonded guy and I'm all about taking care of our local health. No, I'm not the one to take any drop of work away from our local guys. Uh, I think Teddy Berry charged five thousand dollars out there to cut that tree down. And men Bill got killed by the, by the people, not by the women out there, so. Thirteen thousand might not be a bad deal, actually, cut three of them and trim them up.
Did we just get this one person to look at it or did we go out for bid for it or should we go out for bid? Should we get a maintenance agreement to take care of these trees? Because I'm like pick, ever since I've been in here, I've heard about these trees and the lawn. And, and we, we, we need somebody qualified that can, that can face these people.
And I'm not saying anything about Teddy Berry, but every time we've had an ag or life extension, aggie up here, or ag, uh, people up here talking about these trees, they've been pruned wrong. I've been hearing that for four years now that we're not pruning these trees right. We're pruning limbs off of them. So apparently, I didn't know it was three or four years away, so trim a tree, all we did was change all and trim it. Well, apparently there is. Uh, and that's what this man told me, so.
He said, we should go out, go out and roll away from them. And he's been in business for, what, eighteen years or so? And, uh, he's been recommended by this, uh, uh, Emily up there to me, and that's the reason I called. He's, he's licensed, he's bonded and, but it's, it's a long range plan for me as a court, to be in the court and being responsible for the courtyard, is we've got to have some water. We've got to have some bird eye, we've got to have some grain and, and, but we've got to take care of the health of our trees, birds, in my opinion.
Is he going to haul off anything he cuts?
No, he's not. Now, Tommy agreed that he would haul it off.
The three that need to be removed, can Tommy just cut those three down?
Can Tommy?
I mean, he's going to have to haul it off anyway. Can he just, I mean, it saves three thousand dollars.
Well, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put our maintenance man over there on this tree next to the, the, the. I think we could haul them off. I think we have the means to haul them off.
It seems like the thirteen thousand dollars, I could haul it off, you know? Or, or cut it into pieces that can be hauled, it's not, it's hard, but it's, it can be hauled.
I'll allow some of that con, but that's good for all, that's, that's going to burn.
I can give you the con with.
Do I?
We give you the con with.
You haul it off.
No.
I mean, I guess more prices for other people of this is just one. Miss Emily, uh, recommended the cost sheet, no complaints whatsoever.
Teddy Berry charged me ten thousand dollars to cut down eight trees up on my house and on Little Church. I probably paid twenty.
They cut one down for me that's outside my house, I don't know, but it wasn't there at price. And did an excellent job too. I mean, I, I really don't care who does it. I just, I just thought it was too much money. It's, it's, you know, it's me. I just don't like spending much money. I mean, some of, some of us can drive lanes, some of us can drive.
They don't have to bid this out, do they?
No.
I hear you, sir.
I'm saying.
Most of them made second, we approve the annual tree maintenance, forty thousand, two, to the environmental free service. Thirty thousand, a hundred dollars, uh, any discussion?
You, wait a minute, you got that okay? I mean, you got, you talked to the people, right?
I haven't talked to them yet.
John, what's the, what's the, uh, what's the pose?
Get it, get it, get it. Go for it.
Okay. You can make that happen or you got to go on. Well, I mean, you, you didn't want to talk to them most. I mean, you, they listen to you before they listen to anybody.
Well, I'll put word on them. Let's go for it.
Two more years and, uh, ten more months.
I vote for it. On paper.
One, two, three.
I'm against it.
Number one. Okay, number eleven is a separate announcement, we have to, uh, meet the county public facility corporation board. Next one.
Second.
Most of them made second, except for the, uh, the, the county public facility corporation. Any discussion? Not all clear? Five of them. Uh, number twelve is appointment for the county public facility corporation board.
Make the motion with point, Judge Dennis Hughes.
Second.
Most of them made second, we replace, uh, uh, Leonard Powell with Dennis Jones, which is the public, uh, facility corporation board. Any discussion? Not all clear?
Four, uh, oh, you didn't vote?
I can't vote. I don't vote for myself, I don't. So.
You got some other bits you can add. You can be.
Second.
For everybody leave now that we're darned, if, if, if we can legally do this. And we had a, uh, our legislative session is going to start in January. And, uh, as a member of the legislative board for the sheriff's association, a big deal is going to be redistricting this year in the legislature. And I would just like to encourage everyone here to please encourage all of our constituents and friends and family to take the time to, to do these census forms. Okay, if everybody know this, it's all happened, we probably shouldn't, it's just something to make the real. It's so important that we get the census right for our county. It's going to be so beneficial for us. And, uh, that's something that, that we're really pushing is for the census. And if everybody would just kind of encourage everybody to do that because it's so, they'll be so, so important to the redistricting.
It's good you said that because me and Philip just got back from College Station from school. And that was one of our speakers down there talking about that we currently have thirty-nine million people in the state of Texas. And in ten years, it's going to be fifty-five million. And we got a hundred, there's a possibly a hundred counties that are losing population and we just happen to be one of them.
We don't hate to lose our reps, but we, we're so blessed to have what we got.
But they was big on that. That was a full session that we sat out there, that's easy, with that census.
I'm, I'm looking forward to precinct four coming back at ten oh four again.
They said to be very, uh, that, that guy that was speaking about that, they said you need to be very involved. Every elected official needs to be involved in that.
Wes, in case you didn't know it, Bill really want to be to encourage you to, uh, uh, top County Road thirty-one, the other four.
You can't put a ditch down there.
No. For our blessing, like, uh, these, these seventeen roads.